There, council meeting again, the Vice Mayor, members of the council, town staff, members of the public, thank you so much for being here this evening. Always a pleasure to see you. Call this meeting to order. Would you call the roll, please, Russell?
Councilmember McKay?
Here.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Here.
Mayor Nelson? Here. We stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, a couple of things. This month is the Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I believe is Katie Ortiz, she is here. Hi, Katie. If you'll come on up, and I have a proclamation to read for the record, we're going to come up there and get a photograph, because obviously, in light of, you know, the environment that exists out there today, something that certainly is at the forefront, and we're proud to support this effort. So if I could read for the record, the proclamation, again, this is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is one of the most widespread problems in our society, which affects women, men, and children of all racial, social, religious, ethnic, and economic groups, and can have a huge range of consequences if it is not dealt with, and in some cases has even led to death. And whereas ramifications of domestic violence are staggering, and the tragedy of domestic violence touches all our lives by weakening families, leaving emotional scars as devastating as physical ones, and creating a destructive cycle of violence where those who are abused as children may become abusers themselves. And whereas although great strides have been taken to educate people about domestic violence, an average of three women die every day in America, one in four women and one in 13 men will experience domestic violence in their lifetime, and domestic violence still often goes unreported. And whereas are asking everyone to play an active role in preventing and ending domestic violence by stepping up to stop or report violence when they see it, and to commit to making sure that no one suffers alone. Whereas Women in Distress of Broward County is the only nationally accredited, state-certified full-service domestic violence center, serving Broward County through a 24-hour crisis intervention hotline and emergency shelter, as well as offering counseling and support for victims and their children. And whereas we call on the residents of the Town of Southwest Ranches to speak out against domestic violence and support local efforts to assist victims of these crimes in finding the help and healing they need. Now therefore, I, Jeff Nelson, Mayor of the Town of Southwest Ranches, along with the Town Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the Town of Southwest Ranches, encourage victims or loved ones and concerned citizens to help raise awareness of this serious issue. In witness thereof, I set my sand, and of course, I have it signed, and before I turn it over to you, Katie, what we'd like to do is come down there and present this to you, and get a photograph, and then I'm going to give you, obviously, an opportunity to say a few words. We thank you so much for coming, council. Do you mind? Great.
Adrian B., my friends are calling.
Well, it's great that Brandon Marshall is a resident. It's just not the same as you're saying.
You want to sit here, you want to trade?
The irony is that Brandon Marshall should be here tonight. Brandon Marshall is a resident.
His house was presented.
Yeah. He's moving to Chicago.
That was pretty remarkable. Credit to these two gentlemen. Thank you.
On behalf of Women in Distress, just wanted to take this moment to thank the Town of Southwest Ranches for allowing us this opportunity to really raise awareness for the issue of domestic violence. As you mentioned, it's really in the forefront of the news nowadays, and it's just a wonderful opportunity to have this moment to really, you know, shine a light on the cycle of violence, and thank you all, and thank you all your residents for helping us break that cycle. So, thank you.
Katie, thanks so much. Thank you for all that you do. You're bad, Keith. Okay, two more orders of business. It is Fire Prevention Week, and I know Chief Bennett is here, and we also have a proclamation in support of Fire Prevention Week, so I'll read this for the record, and Chief, if you don't mind, we can get you to come up and also get a photo op. A lot of good things happening here in the Town of Southwest Ranches. Whereas the Town of Southwest Ranches Fire Rescue Department is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all its residents, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,300 people in the United States in 2012, according to the latest research from nonprofit National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to more than 365,000 home fires, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported homes' fire in half, and whereas three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms, and whereas one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms, none were working and should have operated but did not because of missing, disconnected, or dead batteries, and whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be likely to survive a fire, and whereas the first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas the 2014 Fire Prevention Week theme, Working Smoke Alarms Save Lives, tests yours every month, effectively serves your mind as we need working smoke alarms to give us the time to get out safely. Now therefore, I, Jeff Nelson, Mayor of the Town of Southwest Ranches, along with the Town Council, urge all citizens to test their smoke alarms at every month and to support the public safety activities and efforts of the Town of Southwest Ranches Volunteer Fire Department, our fire department with Davy, and Prevention Week of 2014, to hereby proclaim October 5th through 11th, 2014, as Fire Prevention Week. In recognition, Chief, we know the jobs, you're at the forefront every single day, you and Davy and this cooperative effort do an outstanding job, and we sincerely appreciate it. So if we come down there and give you this proclamation and get a picture, we would appreciate it.
Like no one. Yeah, it's like, my mom called me today. I'm at Home Depot making the delivery you need, but they can't deliver until Wednesday. That's outrageous. I said, Mom, that's tomorrow.
They'll get there someday. Be nice.
How old am I? Thirty-nine. Can you believe that? Just made City Attorney at 24. It was much more fun when I was 24.
Yeah, I was young then.
Yeah.
Still on the other side of town?
Yeah.
And now, I'm pleased and honored, and I know the Vice Mayor and this council and staff, and the staff that, and the Finance Department are very, very excited and proud of getting, and that is the Award of Financial Reporting Achievement that was given to Mr. Sherwood, our Town Administrator, Financial Administrator here in the Town of Southwest Ranches. And just to give you a background of what this means, and how prestigious this award and this designation is, and it wasn't too long ago that we didn't get this, and something we're very, very proud of, and Marty, you and your team, congratulations and a great job. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to the Town of Southwest Ranches by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or CAFER. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. An Award of Financial Reporting Achievement has been awarded to our department designated by the government as primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning CAFER. This has been presented to Martin D. Sherwood, the Town's Financial Administrator here in the Town of Southwest Ranches. The CAFER has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story, and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFER. The GFOA is a nonprofit professional association serving approximately 17,500 government finance professionals with offices in Chicago, Illinois, and Washington, D.C. Marty, so proud, congratulations, what an outstanding, an outstanding job, and...
Thank you.
And a picture, absolutely.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, Council. We're very proud, Finance Department especially. But there's more than one person that goes into this book, and this is our September 30th, 2013 award. It's the third consecutive year that has been awarded under my jurisdiction. It's a lot of work. I want to thank town staff, especially. There's a lot of, the statistics portions are very comprehensive. It requires a lot of work and effort by the entire town. So this is, I consider, a town award. Fortunately, they have to designate one person as the responsible party, so I acknowledge and take acceptance of that. So thank you very much.
Very good. One more time. This is a good one. It's a big one.
Yep.
Oh, not yet. Congratulations, Marty, great job.
Photo bomb. No photo bomb. She met Marty.
Okay, we have 14 more awards that, I'm just kidding. Just kidding, just kidding. The next item on the agenda is quasi-judicial hearing. And with that introduction and the process, I'll turn it over to Keith.
Thanks, Mayor. There's one item on the agenda tonight that's quasi-judicial in nature, and I'll have Russell reading into the record, then I'll explain where we're at.
An ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving the rezoning of approximately 1.06 acres from rural estate district to community facility district, generally located 600 feet south of Griffin Road on the west side of Southwest 130th Avenue, more particularly described as the south 173 feet of the north 844 feet of Section 26, Township 50 South, Range 40 East, lying south of South New River Canal, less the east 2,631.70 feet, and less the west 2,331.66 feet, less the east 50 feet thereof, South Florida Hindu Temple, 5,000 Southwest 130th Avenue, application number RZ-017-12, providing for recordation, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Before I begin, if any council member can make any disclosures at this time before we commence the process?
Yes, I do. I spoke to Steve, the Hindu Temple's attorney, for probably about a half an hour this afternoon, like 3:00 to 4:00, 3:30 or 4:00 or something. And we discussed kind of what the meeting we had, some changes they've made, and recommendations they're coming forward with, so he's going to, I think, present them this evening, so I just want to divulge the fact that he called me, we spoke for about 30 minutes.
And that you had a meeting on?
The meeting was last Saturday here at Town Hall.
Thank you. Speak to any residents or anyone else?
I'd spoken to all the residents. A week ago, Sunday, not everybody was home, but I went and knocked on everybody's door and left them a paper about the meeting that we had last Saturday. Some made it, some didn't. Most of them are here this evening, and so...
Thank you. Councilman?
I also talked to the attorney, and I was at the Saturday meeting also.
You speak to any other residents or anyone else aside from that?
Did I speak to any of them? Yes, I did. I don't, yeah, the gentleman sitting there with white hat, I think I spoke with him.
Thank you, Councilman.
For just a few minutes.
I've had numerous emails and letters from residents. That's about the only contact I've had.
And again, one-way communication, Keith, just to confirm what Gary had said, emails and things like that, but no conversation.
Yeah, same emails, I received emails.
Thank you. When this matter last came before you, we had the complete hearing. We had full public deliberation, and it was sent to the council for its deliberation, and at that time, the council requested a tabling of the item to give an opportunity for the applicant to meet with the surrounding residents to see whether or not they could come to any accord relating the compatibility of the rezoning to the surrounding residential area. This item comes back before you at this point, not for a full public hearing again, but as a report to the council to discuss what was discussed at that meeting, and for you to continue with your deliberations. That being said, since the last time that we had a meeting, the residents hired legal counsel, Stephen Wery, who is here from Greensboro Martyr, and Stephen and I have spoken...
The temple, not the residence. The temple hired Stephen.
The temple, excuse me. The temple hired Stephen Wery, and at this time, what we believe is proper and acceptable to the applicant is that Mr. Wery is requesting 15 minutes to give a presentation on not re-going over everything that was discussed at the first hearing, but to state what occurred since the hearing and what they're proposing. And then similarly, we will give the residents, or a representative from the residents, the same 15 minutes to respond. If the residents want to break it up, that's up to them. But then after that point, there'll be no further testimony taken. The testimony portion is closed, it will be turned back over to the mayor and the council for deliberation and any final questions that they may have.
Thank you, Keith.
Mr. Wery, since everyone else has spoken and has been sworn in previously, I'll ask the clerk to swear you in at this time, and if any other resident had not been sworn in from the prior proceeding and thinks that they may speak on behalf of the residents tonight, I would ask that you be sworn in as well.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. Mr. Wery, you're here on behalf of the applicant, the temple?
Correct.
And you understand why you're here today and agree to the procedural...
Take it out and hold it, it's easier, Steve.
Or just speak loudly in it. And you understand and agree with the procedural posture that we're giving everyone 15 minutes tonight?
I understand and I agree, yes.
Russell, if you could please set the clock for 15 minutes, and we'll begin.
Procedurally, is it okay if I move the podium board a little bit? And also, I know I supplied the town's clerk with some slides that, we could put them up so that the neighbors can also see what we're talking about, that would be helpful, too.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council Members, Mr. Town Attorney, Mr. Town Clerk, thank you for the time to be here. We have spent quite a bit of time since the beginning of August, working on trying to refine the proposal for rezoning and the conceptual site plan that goes along with it, that has been the source of such concern to neighbors. In connection with that effort, what we've done is initially tried to address the, what we've understood as being the crux of the problem, which is traffic. And our first step in addressing the traffic issue was to meet with the jurisdictional authorities to find out what their take was on a suggested idea to close off access from the temple site to Southwest 130th Avenue. Griffin Road is a state road jurisdictionally, and so the authority that we met with was FDOT. On September 4th, we had a meeting with, it was a pre-application meeting with FDOT authorities, where we posed the question, would we be allowed to close off access from the site to Southwest 130th Avenue? So to point it out, this is Griffin Road going up and down. Russell, you can see that? This is Griffin Road, obviously going up and down. North is facing toward me on the orientation here. Sorry, I'm sorry. Shooting me in the eye. This is Southwest 130th Avenue, and the drive access that we're talking about is this eastern drive access right here. This is the temple site. And so what we asked FDOT was, would we be willing, or would we be able to close access here? Now, the first question that might occur to you is, well, why are we talking to FDOT? That's not Griffin Road. And the answer to that is that the site, when it was platted, was platted with access plan on Griffin Road, which again is a state jurisdictional road, and Southwest 130th. So if we're making a change to the site that impacts the function of the state roadway, then that brings in FDOT jurisdiction. So that's why they're able to step in. Jeff Cadens from your town's planning office was in attendance at that meeting, and I'm sure he's able to, you know, field any questions you might have in that respect. So we asked the question, can we close off access? FDOT, in short, answered no. They cited operational, functional concerns, and safety concerns, mostly relating to the fact that if we were to close off access completely, then it would cause an increase in U-turns further west on Griffin Road, at the intersection actually in front of the Town Council chambers. So we went away with that meeting with a letter that said exactly what I'm telling you. And, Russell, you don't actually have this?
Upside down.
So this is the letter we got from FDOT denying the request. Now, some neighbors were concerned that we didn't work very hard to try to sell this, and that's a fair comment. When we introduced the idea, we said that we're in the process of going through a rezoning, and that we are discussing a conceptual site plan in connection with that rezoning, and in the meetings that we've had with neighbors, their representatives, and Councilmember McKay as well, the suggestion came through strongly that this is something that we should consider. We said, frankly, our preference would be not to have that, but it's not our decision, and we've been asked to, in good faith, present this question to you as the jurisdictional authority to answer whether it's even possible. And so that's the context in which FDOT made its assessment and issued this letter. So we answered the question, can we close off access to 130th? We cannot close off access. What we then looked at was, you know, other things we could do to accommodate or somehow mitigate the traffic concern. And time and time again, what we heard from neighbors was that there was traffic congestion occurring primarily when festivals were being held at the site, and the festivals are outdoor events that are permitted events according to the town's code. And so they typically bring a lot of people in, and that's been a source of increased congestion. Some residents, some neighbors have also said that above and beyond the, you know, the occurrence of the festivals, there's also traffic congestion that occurs on a weekly basis every time there's a Sunday service. So we looked at these issues, and the most obvious thing we could address was the deep congestion that occurs, that neighbors feel occurs, and really does occur, did occur at least, in connection with these large outdoor events. And so what we did was we took the step of engaging a valet parking service and an annual service contract. That vendor is Asta Parking. It's a well-known valet company, and we have put together a plan, a traffic management plan, that we believe addresses... We believe addresses, you may not have that one. And residents have seen this. We had our Town Hall meeting, they saw the FDOT letter, and they saw the traffic management plan as well. But we believe this addresses issues regarding the festivals that occur. And we put this plan into place at our latest festival, and in contrast to what was occurring before with parking occurring off-site, including, you know, not on the other side of Griffin Road, and in a problematic way on the swale of Southwest 130th Avenue, all the parking was able to be contained on-site. No off-site parking whatsoever. And the way that's accomplished is we had five attendants who basically parked the cars more compactly, more smartly, and accommodate all parking on-site. So with less off-site parking and no need for shuttling or valet kind of services taking people back and forth in their cars, that reduces trips and has the overall effect of making what is almost an unavoidable occurring traffic problem mitigated to the greatest extent that we can. And these festivals have occurred and will, you know, occur on a going-forward basis, regardless of the rezoning request. And the rezoning request and the site plan that go along with it will not appreciably expand, in our view, the numbers of people who attend these festivals. So that's another step that we've taken to address traffic. Now, we shared this with neighbors at our Town Hall meeting on Saturday, and that lasted a little over two hours in my recollection, and neighbors didn't, they weren't completely satisfied with this plan either. And so what we've done is we've taken those ideas and made some additional modifications to our conceptual site plan. And let me start by showing you what our conceptual plan was. This is a colorized version, so you can see more easily what the structures are that we have planned for the site. The, let's see. The, let's see, the temple complex, the worship center is here, with the proposed community center existing on the south end of the site, next to a neighbor that lives, obviously, next door to that residential lot and across the street from another neighbor. What we've done is we essentially flipped the open space area you see here with the retention area and playground area and this retention pond area to come up with a new plan that greatly consolidates the structures associated with our conceptual site plan. It creates, as you can see, a very wide, sorry, very wide buffer area on the south end, which is comprised of this retention area with a playground to the east, which gives some additional buffering to neighbors who live across the street to the east. But that doesn't address the traffic. That helps with buffering and helps with some aspects of traffic in terms of additional parking that previous plans showed going along this area, which when cars, you know, in the night would be parking and coming and going, headlights conceivably could shine through and, you know, be burdensome or maybe even engine sound.
Does he have that slide that you're showing us right now, or he only has the slide that's up on?
It's the last one, sorry. It's not the same one?
Not the same slide?
It's the very last slide.
Hey, Steve, where would the --
That slide, right there.
Where would, I'm sorry Doug, where would valet be stationed on some of these events that you're proposing regarding?
We asked the valet service to come up with a parking plan.
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry, Mike, if that's, if you're gonna bring that up a little bit, I'll hold off on that.
That's okay. I touched on it earlier and I can --
Mayor, if I may, so to not interrupt, Mr. Weary's 15 minutes of time. Let's finish his presentation, write down your questions, and then we can ask it so that we don't take away from it.
I just wanted to see because the map was up there.
Yeah, that's okay.
No problem, sorry.
One second, because we want to give him credit for the time.
Well, while we're waiting, I can just point out that we have suggested, been suggested by our valet company to have an attendant at these locations where you see bubbled in yellow. And that's where the five attendants will be stationed initially. And there would be handoffs that occur that shift cars as they come in to the very south end of the site and gradually filling the site up throughout the, you know, the beginning of the event.
I'm sorry, you have that up there.
Right, no, no, that's okay. It's hard to say. Getting back to the traffic issue, we heard that the traffic management plan is, you know, well as we believe it would address, you know, off-site parking issues and manage, you know, what in the past has not frankly been well managed. The concern has been that that wasn't enough. And so what we've done is we've thought further about what we can do to accommodate those legitimate concerns that neighbors have. And we've agreed, or not agreed, but this is our idea, this is our suggestion. The suggestion is to add directional signage at the east drive entryway on Southwest 130th Avenue. And that directional signage would say entry only. So cars potentially seeking to leave the site from that drive entrance would see those signs and be turned away. Not all cars or drivers are gonna listen to a sign, and we know that. And so what we're also willing to do, and what we've actually put into place starting this past Sunday, and what we're willing to commit to as a binding component of a deed restriction that we'd enter into in connection with an approval tonight, is agree to, once services start on a weekly basis, so this would be tending to the traffic problem that occurs on a regular basis that neighbors have, you know, raised their concern about, we would put up traffic control cones here at the drive entrances. So not only would the signs be there, but we'd have a physical barrier that would prevent cars from being able to leave the site and enter onto Southwest 130th Avenue. Cars would be forced to leave out Griffin Road, and as a matter of, you know, our choice of voluntary use of the site, we believe we can do that. We don't need FDOT's permission to do that. We think to actually close off that access, FDOT, their permission would be required. This kind of measure, we can voluntarily do that, and we're willing to do that. And we think that would go a great distance in helping to alleviate the traffic problem. But not only that, we've also heard that even on a weekly basis, neighbors have been concerned about cars entering into the site from Southwest 130th. And that a lot of these cars are coming from the west, and what they'll do is they'll go east on Griffin Road, and they'll skip right past this drive entrance here and go right down and then circle around and come in the site from Southwest 130th. One reason for that, and I've driven it myself, is this drive access, and I don't know how many of you are familiar with it, but it's concrete. It's not asphalt. And the, is that my three-minute warning?
Yeah, let's wrap it up.
Right. It's not asphalt, and so it's easy to miss. The street, obviously, that is asphalt. So if you're not used to it, or you're not really paying attention to it, you'll miss it. Not only that, but it's not depicted on this plan, but the road actually widens a little bit right here, and the bike lane begins and a right turn lane starts. So the eyes of a driver are naturally directed to, you know, thinking about this intersection, not this intersection. So what we're proposing is to add a directional sign before that intersection, after the intersection, maybe both, just to remind drivers that this is the way to enter the site from Griffin Road. These are our suggestions, basically. We've also talked previously about other concerns raised by neighbors, namely lighting. And, you know, obviously, as part of the development of this site, we would agree to upgrade all of the lighting on the site, to put in full cutoff fixtures, and make sure that sources of glare are eliminated and that we comply with the town's night I guess I'll be available to answer questions after this. I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of questions. I'm sure that neighbors will have additional questions to raise or comment, and I'll address those at that time.
Thank you, Steve. At this point, the residents who were the other intervening party into this action will similarly be given 15 minutes. I don't know if the residents have one spokesman or if a few of you want to speak, so just be cognizant of your time like Mr. Weary was as well. And again, when the residents come to the podium, like Mr. Weary did, state your name, your address, and confirm that you were sworn in at the prior hearing. If you weren't sworn in, Russell's here, I'll swear you in now. Okay, so what I'd ask then is for the residents that are gonna speak to essentially line up so that you don't -- time?
Having accumulated 15 minutes.
Yeah, it's accumulated 15 minutes. Whenever you're ready. Again, just --
My name is Lynn Rivas. I live on 130th Avenue. Yes, I have been sworn in. And I would like to start off with saying that I, myself personally, along with my residents, my, sorry, my neighbors, a commercial-like building, even more than what is existing, does not belong in our, in our community. This proposed rezoning is a nightmare for us residents who so dearly love our rural community. Let us continue preserving our rural lifestyle. I say no rezoning, no, no, no. And I'm gonna leave the particulars to the rest of my neighbors, who are good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, please state your name, your address, and that you've been sworn in.
Rosina Maripode Bovee, I've been just sworn in, and --
Rosina, if you could please speak loudly in the mic so they can hear you.
I live on 130th Avenue. Being the first house, I have the biggest impact. All my emails, I hope they'll be introduced, says it all. I'm gonna reiterate just a few points. My points are no rezoning now or even 10 years from now. Today you may have 10 cars, next year you'll have 20, and so it increases. We have a residential area, a small residential area, who does not have the capacity or the capability of accommodating such a huge facility, community facility or complex. Impact study on 130th Avenue, I have not seen it. The invasion intrusion and privacy is what I value the most. And I put that question to you, would you like your family to go through invasion intrusion? And I say that because a few years back, during the fireworks, my shed was burnt down. Numerous letters was written, certified, no effort, not even an apology. And really, that's, that's all I have to say. Oh, and one last thing, being a single mother with children, now I am a single grandmother with young children, I had personally experienced pedophiles knocking on my window and intruders. And you know the rest, because it's in the sunset tomorrow. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Alva Blumenthal, and I live at 12931 Southwest 52nd Street, Southwest Ranches.
And you've been sworn in, correct?
Yes. I have a, first of all, a petition that we got from our neighbors, because at the last meeting, it was mentioned that some of the members that are not at the meeting mean that it could mean that they are in agreement with what is proposed. We have names of the residents and people that are not here today, and were not here at the Saturday meeting or at previous meetings where they have signed the petition, they are not in agreement with the proposal that has been proposed, if I can hand that to you.
Thank you.
My second point is that many promises are being made up here by the representatives of the South Florida Hindu Temple regarding the parking, and I have lived in my community for the past 24 years. I lived there when cow pass, cows were pasturing in that property to what it is today. The traffic problem, I have, I spoke personally to Mrs. Samika Patel, and her response to me was, I cannot control what our members do. I cannot tell them not to park on the swales. I cannot tell them not to park where they park. So I personally spoke to them and someone else from their, one of their festivities where I was unable to get to my house with my car. Doug McKay was out there. There was no way that our cars could go through their cars that were parked in all our streets. My first concern was, I have small children, how about if I had a heart attack? I needed an emergency vehicle to come to my house? The emergency vehicle will not be able to get into my house. Our road is a dead-end road, there's only one way in, one way out, and it's a one-lane road. So to me, all these promises that are being made by the attorney mean nothing. We were promised beautiful landscaping. 15 years later, you should be able to go down our street and look at beautiful landscaping. We have three-foot bushes. So to me, them coming up here and saying all these promises, we promised a valet, we promised this, we promised that, are worthless, they're, you know, like I said, you know, fool us once, shame on you, fool us twice, shame on me. So really, we, you know, we've gone out of our way, we, we are, you know, at the Saturday meeting, a comment was made by the attorney that we are mean-spirited people. We're not. We've lived with this problem for 15 years. Not one time have we come to the council and complained to you that the temple, we're having these problems. Not one time have we called code enforcement, we're having these problems. We've lived with it. We just live with it, try to be good neighbors, wave when we go by, try to make the best of things. But now to, you know, double the problem, I mean, you know, not considered, okay, let's try to live, I suggested to Mrs. Patel, you know, she, when she came out to my house, when she came to visit, we did speak to them. And we said, well, why don't you keep the concrete part? You know, she says, we're gonna do it where the covered area is in the back. You know, I said, well, that may be feasible, you have four acres of open space to your east, that kind will offset all that concrete and all that, you know, architectural style that doesn't fit in with our homes, it'll offset it. So when we hit the residential area, then to us, it seems like, okay, we're home, we're rural, you know, this is where we, this is where we bought, this is where we've lived, this is where we belong. You know, then I come back today, no changes were made that benefit us. All the changes that are made only benefit them. So to me, it's like, here we are, have everything to lose, because by coming to these meetings, all you're doing is asking us to give up what we have, but what are you giving up? All you're doing is gaining. So their gain cannot be just our loss. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, state your name and address, and if you've been sworn in.
Hi, I'm Richard Blumenthal, 129 --
Richard, you speak in the microphone. Thank you.
My name's Richard Blumenthal, 12931 Southwest 52nd Street. I'd just like to say, just for the record, that it's kind of a burden to the residents that we don't even get to see these things. We don't, we're not prepared. Someone has a prepared statement, and we're here now that we only have 15 minutes that we have to try to address it. But with that being said, some of the things that I just saw was, one is, we don't know the height of the building, we don't know the resident appearance, and more important is that the town planning has not had a chance to vet out their proposal. From what I could see, there's a lot more parking spaces, and additional parking spaces mean additional traffic. The other thing, too, is when they, they had, and again, we didn't get to see it, when they had their valet parking, my understanding is that at a CF zoning, they can only park in the assigned parking spots. So if they're parking in the grass and they're doing all that, my understanding is that's a town enforcement issue. With that, I'd like my fellow people to speak. Thank you.
You've been sworn in, yes? Richard?
You were sworn in.
Yeah, you were sworn in. Okay, thank you.
And just one last comment, is it's basically, the bottom line of the temple, they, I think they've outgrown their site, and all these other remedies are taken, is they're just putting a Band-Aid on the original, on the main problem. The main problem is they, their growth overdid their site. Thank you. And I was sworn in.
I was sworn in.
Russell?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Ellen Wellington. I live at 14301 Pedigree Lane here in the ranches. I am also the president, or vice president of the South Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association, and I've heard from all of our residents, and I have to side with them. I agree that, you know, we live in a rural community, and once we start opening it up to allowing people to intrude into our rural lifestyle, it's just gonna be a domino effect. So it's just not the folks on 130th that are concerned, it's the other folks within the community. And I agree that Hindu temples probably outgrown their site, and maybe they should possibly look for a different area that they can grow into and work, you know, more for their community and what they need than worrying about intruding into our personal lives and our rural lifestyle. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Nadine Elkuri. I live 130th Avenue.
And you've been sworn in.
I was, last time. You know, I'm very sad how this issue has turned out to be very difficult on both sides, because the least wanted to have is like friction between our neighbors. One thing I would like to comment very quickly is that the first amendment of the Constitution of the United States of America gives each individual the freedom of speech. It's very important to allow to each individual to express his feelings when it's gonna touch his personal interests. Especially that to have a constitutional outcome regarding that, we have to give a fair public hearing. The temple has, is considered one legal entity, so they can have one voice, but us as residents, each one of us count one voice. Let's go to the topic. I respect what our, the attorney of our neighbors from the Hindu temple was trying to explain. I agree with him on certain points, but I disagree on other points, specifically that what's gonna happen is gonna be, if it happened, it's gonna be in repairable damage to the core character and essence of our town. to be in repairable damage to the core character and essence of our town. The second thing I'm going to say is, under those special circumstances, what they are requesting doesn't work for us. We wish if we had different circumstances, but we have a dead end, and our street is very small and it's clogged. So in that way, we are in a different situation than other rezoning that happened in the town. We have also mental health facility, and those people require permanent attention, and they have to have a flow when they go and come. I'm worried about my neighbors and my kids when they cross the street because once we have staff working permanently in an office, this is going to increase traffic, and, you know, this is going to probably let people be less attentive to like the driver, the driving mileage and how fast they go, and if they pay attention to small kids who just, you know, casually go across the street to play with each other. So what I want to say, we wished if we had different circumstances, but the circumstances are not applicable under their request. Thank you, and I hope you take it into consideration.
Vince Faletta, and I've been sworn. I'm sorry I didn't have the ability to hear the soft-spoken attorney on his deliberation, on his improvements or whatever, but I didn't hear any improvements for 130th Avenue. I didn't hear anything about an impact study made by the people that are going to impact 130th Avenue. I didn't hear any improvement at all at 130th Avenue. I didn't hear anything about guardrails for the safety of the people that are going in and out. I've been in and out of that road for 47 years for several different reasons, and it is not a viable road for heavy traffic. And you're talking about weekly traffic. And it's your duty, and it's my duty, to make point that it's your duty as the council to watch out for the citizens before anything else. And there is no safety on that road. It is one, it's a one-lane road, it isn't even a two-lane road. You have no guardrails, there is, I didn't hear the attorney say they're going to make any improvements on the road. I didn't hear them say they're going to give up any property to widen the road in their particular area. I didn't hear anything except something about cones and valets. But that doesn't address the safety and the improvements of the road. Who is going to improve the road? Who's going to put up the guardrails? Who's going to take, watch out for the citizen? I hope it's you five people and not somebody else up there. Thank you.
Thank you. I see the time is running out. Are these the last two speakers who want to speak? Does anyone else want to speak? So Eleanor, is that the last three? Stephen, do you have any objection if we finish up the last three speakers?
Of course.
Okay.
Thank you. My name is Mark Gillett. I live at 12901 Southwest 52nd Street, and I have been sworn in. Okay, I was here to talk about the traffic, but some other issues have not been addressed that we need to, to address right now. First, the petitioner needs to meet four criteria before this petition can be approved. Okay, the petitioner has to supply substantial, let me get it here, substantial competent evidence that these four criteria have been met. Now, as counsel, your job is to first establish that the criteria have been met, okay? And we need to see the evidence, and please present it to the residents that they have been met, because we have presented evidence that they have not been met, okay? The last meeting, Mr. Blumenthal put evidence into the file and did it by the rules, so you should have the rules, okay? The rules, one, there exists an error or ambiguity and must be corrected. That's obviously not true. There exist a change or changing conditions which make approval for the request appropriate. The only condition that's changed is they've grown. Substantial reasons exist for property cannot be used in accordance with existing zoning, okay? It can be, and it is being used right now. That the request would advance public purpose, including but not limited to protecting, conserving, or preserving environmental critical areas and natural resources. Definitely, they don't meet any of those criteria. So under those rules, your job is to turn them down, okay? I also have, I printed out today, the city, the town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan, okay? On page 44, plan elements, future land use elements, and I'm going to paraphrase to save time, okay? The objective of this plan that I think everybody but one council member reapproved last year, okay, says that the objective is to protect all residential areas of the town, future land use maps in order to preserve the town's existing rule, character, and lifestyle while respecting the property in existence and constitutional property rights of an individual owner, okay? These are the individual owners, and we're asking that you respect our rights, okay? On policy 11B, land use plans to more intensive uses shall be prohibited unless the town determines that the use is consistent with future overall goals to protect the town's rural lifestyle. They don't meet that criteria. Okay, policy 11C, the town land development regulations shall provide, and item number four, protect whenever possible all existing planned rural residential areas from disruptive land uses. All the residents have already testified that this is a disruptive land use. So I can go on, I'm going to leave this with you, there's five of them, you can look through them before you make your vote, but I urge you, when you deliberate, okay, we need as a town to say they do not meet the requirements for rezoning, and they don't meet the land use requirements for rezoning, okay? This has already got a lawyer involved, we don't need any more headaches. So we need to address these issues before the council. Thank you.
Give it to Russell, please. You need to go to Russell.
My name is Susan Guillermo. I live on 130th Avenue.
Pull the mic down a little, Susan, just so we can hear you better.
Can you hear me now?
Closer to the mic.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
My name is Susan Guillermo. I live on Southwest 130th Avenue, and I have not been sworn in.
Russell?
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of the Ranches for quite some time. 20-odd years ago, we met with Dr. Patel and Dr. Shaw at the end of our street. They wanted to build a temple at the end of our street. Years ago, we had concerns that the temple would over, become overpopulated and would not be able to be contained to that, just that particular area. And as we stand here today, that has proven true. They made a lot of promises to us back then, and they're all reneged upon. They, empty promises, because today, we shouldn't even be here today for this. We were told that the congregation would always remain small, they would never need any more land than they already had with their existing temple. As the other residents have said, we do have issues with the traffic coming in and out. We also have a handicap facility on the other end of the street that also has a lot of traffic coming in and out. So those are our main concerns and to, of course, keep our rural lifestyle the way we have all had it for, in my case, 30-odd years. Thank you.
Eleanor Manson McKay, 130th Avenue. I was at the meeting on Saturday, and we met for about two hours. And the proposed community center is going to be approximately 11,000 square feet, which is just as big as their worship center. And it's, we're just not facilitated for it. The traffic I see here is, now they have two, two ways in off of 130th Avenue, and we just, it's not facilitated, we just can't handle the traffic there. And I wanted to tell you that about the community center and the size of it. Thank you.
Eleanor, Eleanor. You've been sworn in? Okay, thank you. At this time, both the applicant's revised case in chief and the residence is concluded. Mayor, we're going to turn it back over to the council for full deliberation and to ask any questions. I assume you may want Mr. Weary to respond, but I'll do that during your line of questioning as well. As stated previously by Jeff Cadums, who's here from staff, who made the record to begin with, at this point, you need to look at the totality of the record before you, from the first reading, second reading, the tabling, and this reading. And again, this is a quasi-judicial item, which means that the applicant has the duty to demonstrate by competent substantial evidence that they are satisfying Section 130-030 of the town's Unified Land Development Code. The criteria for everyone to know is before the council, it's in their backup, it's in front of them as I speak now, and the way that the code reads is that you look at Section A, and if they don't meet any of A, then you go to B, and you apply B by looking at C. And that is the standard to which you are charged to make a decision tonight. Mayor, it's over for you to, for consideration.
Thank you, Keith. Doug, I think I'm inclined to turn it over to you initially because I know that you've had a lot of work, a lot of discussion, and I know that you've worked hard trying to get these issues addressed and trying to get it reconciled. I know that there was a meeting that you had spearheaded, and I know that Andy was in attendance as well on Saturday. So if, if you don't mind, at least from, you know, my perspective, and I suspect the rest of the members of this council, where we are today, and this is something that's been debated for a long period of time, and that's, you know, the reason that we've postponed, we've delayed, we've tabled this issue, hopeful that we'd be able to get it, get it reconciled, some kind of common ground, so to speak. So if, if you don't mind, and you agree to it, I'd certainly like to...
I don't mind a bit, Mayor, and I appreciate it, and I thank you very much. And thank you for everybody's patience. I must tell you, one of the complaints I had in going around talking to the neighbors a week ago Sunday was that, "Why has this taken so long?" And I've reminded everybody that when it got sent back to the Hindu temple to address, it just got delayed, 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 more than a year. So that's why it's taken so long, and I tried to explain that, and so it doesn't make sense for them in this process to take this long. So it's been a little annoying, agitated, and anyhow, we're here tonight where we are. A couple of things, I've got a straight question for you, Steve. I hope you have a straight answer. Did you meet one resident that you spoke to that was in favor?
No. Not, not one neighbor.
One person? On, on my block? Or my, or, or the dirt road, either one?
A straight answer is no, we did not.
Okay.
Can I elaborate on that a little bit, though?
Go right ahead.
All right. From where we started out, a lot of neighbors were not only not in favor, but hostile in the, even the idea and the suggestion of it. And, you know, through the course of the dialogue that we had, I, I can't say that anyone's in favor of it because I don't think anybody wants to see, you know, an expansion of the facility. I don't think that's any secret, as far as the neighbors go. But we did make some accommodations, we listened to their suggestions, and we modified our plan to make it more to their liking. And what we also tried to do was to explain to them that this is, this is not the final part of the process, this is just the beginning part of the process, this is the rezoning request that would, if granted, allow us to go forward with a site plan. And the site plan is where all of these details would be worked out. The site plan is something that is approved by this council under quasi-judicial procedures, and the site plan is something that the neighbors will have a great amount of input, opportunity for input and actual input in the formulation of. And, and so a lot of people understood that, and not everybody is satisfied by that, but I, I think there's a greater understanding that this is a small part of a bigger process with a lot more opportunity for input.
Okay. I've got another question that, that didn't get addressed, and we haven't spoken about that I'd like to ask, that, see who might have the answer on staff for us. We have in our code, in our planning, because we have like 30, how many churches do we have? 36 or something? 37? But we made a policy a while back that it could only be, any new ones or whatever, could only be on certain roadways and on certain streets, I believe. And it couldn't be in neighborhoods or communities. So I'm curious if because of this expansion is related to a residential property that puts you deeper down a residential street, does our code that we put in play allow that to happen?
That's a good question. And the answer would be, would be no if this property, the rezoning parcel stood, stood on its own. That's why one of the conditions, one of the necessary conditions for approval of this request, which the applicants agreed to from the beginning, is that they have to do a unity of title on the property. Once it's a single property, it has access to Griffin Road, and it fronts on Griffin Road. So it would meet, it would meet that criteria, council.
Okay, so only because they're existing, they bought the rear property, it's adjoining, that it would be a little bit different. But if it was solo and somebody else coming, even another Hindu temple organization not affiliated with them, it would not be allowed. Is that correct?
Correct. As long as it was looked at as a separate parcel, and it would not be allowed.
They previously had, now, I learned at the Saturday meeting that the lot adjacent to you, the 10-acre strip, was owned by another Hindu organization. Is that correct? Is that what I was told?
Historically, I think it was owned by another Hindu-related organization completely unrelated to the South Florida Hindu temple, but they don't, they no longer own it, they never had any connection to us at all.
It didn't come across that way back then, but go ahead.
Yeah, I, I don't know what happened, but I know it was not owned by any, any organization affiliated with South Florida Hindu temple. It was a completely different sect, actually, of Hindus, coincidentally, and that happens a lot. You've got, you know, sometimes religious organizations, for whatever reason, tending to, to group together. A lot of that does have to do with zoning, and, and maybe, you know, there, there was a, you know, the existing approval perhaps under the old Broward County regime that attracted the, you know, that prior owner. That's total speculation, I don't know, but it's, it's one possible explanation.
I've got to tell you, it's, it's a, it's a difficult thing. I know you all have reached out to the community, you walk the neighborhood, I've walked the neighborhood. They don't want it. You don't really have a need for it. This is a want. It does not affect your religious and religious practices. It's a living facility and classroom addition that you would like to do, that I don't see that you can't do on your existing property as an addition if it's something you really needed. So, you know, due to that, those issues and those facts, you've come a long way, I don't see that you're quite there. A little late in the game, you guys came out to try to sell this. The meeting I had at the Hindu temple a month or so ago, when we sat down... The meeting I had at the Hindu temple a month or so ago, when we sat down, nobody was interested in change. And then Saturday's meeting, you brought new change that I knew nothing about. So I've got to tell you, in my position, where I sit, sit here tonight, that I can't support this right now. There's just no way. And because you don't have to have it. It's a want. You've come a long way, your plans have come a long way, but, but I just don't have a way to support it up here, due to the residents, due to what the zoning is, it was something new to lengthen back in the community. I would tell you, if you had the property on Griffin Road, and it was a widening issue there on Griffin Road, that we wouldn't be here tonight, and this would already be done. But because it's going back in deeper in the neighborhood, right now, your facility affects one resident, and that's Rosina's house, because of what you have now as a residential property. If this were to move forward, what would happen? You'd affect four properties, because the next property down has a shared driveway for two residences, and then you'd affect that immediate following resident. So this impact alone, on top of everything else, encroaches deeper and affects three more residential properties other than the one it affects right now. So I would tell you, because that I cannot support this or be, be with this due to those issues, and it's not a necessity that they have to have right now.
Thank you, Doug. Freddie?
Can I respond?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, Steve, sure.
Thank you.
Keith? He's, he's going to respond to some of...
He should be responding to the council during deliberation. If you have questions for him, you can ask him.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Doug?
I don't have any...
Well, I just want to see if Doug has any questions.
I'm, I'm good.
You had your questions answered? Go ahead, Freddie, we'll direct your questions.
I don't have a question. I want Keith to answer a question. We don't have approval, a motion to approve. Why are we talking?
You don't have any motion on the table because you're just deliberating at this time? If a council member would like to make a, a motion to discuss whether it's approved, denied, tabled, whatever you want, make a motion...
I'll make a motion to deny.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to not, to, to deny. And I think that it only requires one, but still, there's some...
Conversation.
Yeah, absolutely, some additional conversation. And when I came here tonight, I hadn't decided, but I did have some questions, and I did have, you know, a confirmation with regards to what, what I believe is, is appropriate and not affecting your ability, their ability to practice, you know, their, their religion. But I don't want to take away your time, Freddie, but...
Oh, yeah.
You have any other, any other questions or comments? I suspect there'll be some more. So from my perspective, are we burdening the, your ability, the wonderful people that go there on a, on a regular basis, their, their religious practice by denying this? Even, you know, taking a look at what this facility is, it's really not ancillary to the practice, nor by deny it would prohibit the congregation from engaging in this religious And it's not really a house of worship. If you take a look at it, it's a community facility. It's there to provide housing. I don't have everything in, in front of me, but the whole definition and the scenario as to the reasons to add this facility, really, in, in, in my mind, by not approving it, does not adversely impact the ability of these wonderful people to practice their religion. But I will tell you, it does impact the neighborhood. It is not something that is compatible. And even in your own presentation, when you had talked about the traffic that was coming from the south, I can't guarantee you that there isn't going to be somebody that's going to turn down 130th and, and miss the turn-in, or, you know, not have ample checks and balances in place to ensure that that doesn't happen. So even by your own admission, what you're telling us is there's no way to keep people off of that street. And it's just a question of time, depending upon, you know, the, the function or whatever was going on at that particular time, that you're going to adversely impact that, that And again, this is a wonderful, wonderful group. We don't, we welcome them into our town. We welcome the practice, the Hindu people and the Hindu temple. They're wonderful, peaceful people. It's great to have conversations with them. They've been nothing but peaceful and nothing but wonderful. But conversely, I've got to look at the other aspect, too, and by approving this expansion, which is not really an important component to allow them and allow the people that you're representing to continue to practice their religion. It's totally two separate scenarios. And I have to look at the, the, the impact that it has on those neighbors in that, in that neighborhood. So again, I, I'm having a very difficult time reconciling this in, in my mind. And at this particular moment, it's going to be very difficult for you to convince me to support this expansion, because I don't see it as something that is, is necessary. It adversely impacts the neighborhood, and it doesn't prohibit or inhibit the, the ability of those that are there practicing that religion to continue to be able to do that. Sure.
Okay. Thank you. So it's, it's been mentioned that this is not a necessity, that this is a want, not a, not a need. And, and, and let me say that the, the way the temple operates right now, it's akin to an old one-room schoolhouse, right? Where everything has to go, go in, 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 in one single structure. All the activities occur in one structure. Typically, and, and really the way that, that the religion should be practiced, the prayer services should be able to continue without interruption. And as, as it is structured right now, because we've got a limitation on, on the different uses in a single facility in which they can occur, the, the prayer services have to break. And then, and then...
Stop.
And then we, we have educational sessions for the children, basically like Sunday school, where the, where the parents then, you know, have to just kind of stand around. And so, so this is, this is not something that we see as, as merely a want. We see it as something that's, that's, that's really core to the practicing of the religion, to help separate out the, the various uses, so that it's no longer a one-room schoolhouse, but we can have an area that's dedicated for prayer service, and an area that's dedicated during Sunday, while the prayer services are going on, so that the kids can essentially go to Sunday school. And, and that's, that's, you know, the, the purpose of what we're talking about. And that is core to, to the practice of the religion, I think. Also, it has to be said that South Florida Hindu temple has a right to use the roads, right? I mean, they are a property owner. They have been there for years. The plat was approved back in 1996. They acquired this property that we're talking about rezoning in 2002. So it's, it's not a Johnny-come-lately prospect. This is something that has been very long in coming. And have circumstances changed? Yes, since 1996, they have. The, the temple has grown. It, it hasn't grown radically. It's not a mega church. We have, by, by my latest count, something less than 370 families attending the church. It's not a small church, but it's, it's not anywhere clear, close to a big church. That's, that's a, that's a fairly small group. And, and like any church, you know, when, when special events occur, yeah, it does attract more people. And, 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 you know, those people don't necessarily belong to the church.
Steve, Steve, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I, I don't know that, the mayor asked you a question to run on like that. I don't, did you?
Well...
Listen, from getting information to assess and, and evaluate, and I hear what, I hear what you're saying, but...
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just add one thing. You know, we've made a lot of proposals in a very short period of time. And, and it's clear, it's a lot for, for any of us to digest. And, and some of these changes, we think, are, are significant. We think that the neighbors, if we maybe had another opportunity to meet with them, you know, might, might come around and, and look at it in a similar way.
Steve, I asked them. They had no interest.
Well, I mean, all I can say is, these are, these are new ideas, that, you know, we're willing to have another chance, if we can, to meet with neighbors, and, you know, in that instance, you know, maybe a deferral is, is in order. We would request that if, if the board would entertain it, if the council would entertain it.
Stop. Please, you've had an opportunity to speak. You know my, like I said, you know my, my feeling, Steve? The, the addition of a community facility in the middle of a residential neighborhood adversely impacts the people that live on that street. And, you know, that we've got confirmation of that. It's, it's happened before, and there's been some issues, and it hasn't been rectified just by the, the current facility that exists there. So, you know, the fact that you're trying to double the square footage for a community facility, while it's ancillary, it's not necessary to continue the religious practice, which, like I said, these are wonderful people. We've had nothing but, but good conversations and, and certainly are supportive for not only the Hindu temple, but 30-something other religious institutions that exist in the town of Southwest Ranches. It's just that I believe that it, as a result, the impact it has on the, the neighbors, this community facility, very difficult for me, for me to support.
Steve, Mayor.
So Freddie?
May I make a few statements? One thing I want you to understand, we're not picking on the Hindus. We had a church on 186, came with the same thing, and we did the same thing. We turned it down. They wanted to add the lot behind them to their church, and we said no. It's not someone we're picking on you, it's just something in our town that we've said you only can have so much. And these people don't want it. And that's it. It's going blank.
I have a question, ma'am.
Go ahead, Gary.
If you'll indulge me for a minute on your conceptual site plan. The south entrance there, is that new? No, the other one. That one. Is that new?
No, that's, that's not an entrance. That would be closed. There's an existing drive entry here, and we're proposing to have that closed with a Knox lock or something similar, so that it would be used only for emergency access purposes. So the only access...
That one there, that one there looks exactly like the other one to the right of it.
Yeah, it's, if it looks that way, it's definitely not intended to be a drive access. That's just the end, the stub end of the parking area. That's the intention with, with that deflection. The only accesses, the only public accesses would be on Southwest 130th and Griffin Road. And again, you know, with an opportunity to meet with neighbors again, maybe we can come up with, with additional items that, that might win the favor of neighbors. The problem is, if, if we're denied, we, we, there's a year before we can reapply. And, you know, so much time has passed. This was originally applied...
You all delayed it more than a year all by yourself.
No doubt, no doubt. But, but still, so much time has passed since the original application in, in 2012. And just an opportunity to meet one more time, just one more time with neighbors, and see if there's anything we can do, is all we ask.
Mayor.
Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Steve, I appreciate the, the effort that you've made here in the last, I guess, 30 days. I've been following this process kind of from a distance, because it's quasi judicial. I try and not get in the middle of it. I do appreciate Doug and his area, taking that on and jumping in the middle of it. I, I, when, when I look at this issue, to me, it comes down to trust more than anything else. And it's not that there's a lack of integrity on either side. I don't in any way wish to say that or infer that in any way. I think there's quality individuals on both sides. However, this is a great example of, you know, this has been since 2012, this has been going on. And yet, it's only at this point, in the last week or so, last couple of weeks, anyway, that we come out with a new proposal, and, you know, looking for that to make a difference in all these residents' opinions. That, I think, is the problem, that a proposal like this should have been made back, and the residents should have been listened to back in 2012. These adjustments should have been made at that point, gathered feedback, and continued to been refined. And I suspect that perhaps tonight, there would be a different feeling and a different outcome. But I, I would, I don't know, obviously, I don't know exactly how this is going to come out, but it seems to be going one way. I, I personally believe that the denial, the one-year hiatus, would serve the temple well, to be able to allow them time to, you know, continue the dialogue, provide them the time without a pressure, without the residents, the residents know they've been heard at that point. They realize that this is, it's not happening. And then it's the good faith of the, the individuals that attend the temple to, not under any pressure, to be able to build a stronger relationship, hopefully, with the residents. You know, sitting up here on the council, as a council member, I always hope that an organization, whichever organization it is, and the residents of that community, that little section of, of our town, can come together through dialogue and through compromise with a solution they can both live with. We're not there. The residents, to a person, don't agree with this. And I think that, that, you know, the appropriate thing is to deny it at this time, not to do another exchange, extension. And another week or two, I don't think that's, that's going to make a difference. What I do think could make a difference is to deny it, provide the temple the opportunity in a good faith effort to continue to try and work with the neighbors, try and involve things with the neighbors, trying to be better neighbors. Not that they're not today, but there have been some things in the past. There have been some true safety issues on those roads where it was blocked off. That's just unacceptable. And, and it's, and it's those sort of things that, that hang out and continue on, that I think, that maybe this can start a new dialogue to build some, some different conversations going forward.
Freddie?
Yeah. One thing about this, even if we deny it, Steve, we got a problem. And I've looked at it every way I could. Broward County gave us this problem, when they okayed this thing before we became a town. And they opened up 130th Avenue. Now we, we have no way to close it. And that needs to be done.
It does.
Even no matter what they do in the future, that needs to be closed. We don't have any power to close it. So what we need to do is make some provisions. One of them is put up no parking signs. Anybody parks on that road, they're going to get a ticket. We've got to do everything we do to stop that traffic, because even if we deny this thing tonight, we're not solving a lot of those people's problems in the, in the future with that traffic on 137th. And really, the bad part about it, Steve, I looked this up, this was done with Broward County, before we widened Griffin Road. They opened that 130th. They had no reason to open that street. And that's caused the biggest problem. These people may have made this thing tonight without 130th there, because that's the biggest thing, they, they want to get that traffic off 103rd. I talked to DOT people, and they claim now the way the road's configured, they got an opening on 133rd. So the traffic has to... So, the traffic has to come out 103rd from the temple in order to make that, to get out there. And that's why FDOT is saying they can't close 103rd.
Right.
But we've got to try to help those people, even if we deny this thing tonight, to help them. But they need to work together, like you say. And that's one of the big things they're going to have to work with, how they can do something with that problem on 130th.
Well, that's, I mean, and that's a great way to put it, and that's exactly what I'm talking about. I think that if the temple continues with a lot of the plans, a lot of the, you know, the recommendations and the solutions that were brought by the temple tonight are not dependent on either building or not building that addition. You know, those traffic with the cones, with trying, putting up additional signage, all of those things can be done regardless of whether this is approved or denied. And to me, that's exactly the point I'm trying to make, is that if the temple will, you know, starts doing those things, and I think if the residents there start seeing that the temple's being proactive, and they're building, you know, a relationship that's not based on, "If you give me this, I'll do this," but it's based on, "We want to do the right thing, and so therefore, we're going to do these things anyway," and build more of a trust relationship, that's what I was talking about. I think that will go a long way, and certainly partnering with whatever the town can do to make that road safer, too. But, you know, I look to the temple, at this point, to do some of those things on their own, in show of good faith, so that sometime down the road, the residents, you know, will have a different thought, perhaps, about the temple.
Mayor, I'd just like to either modify... Keith, do I need to cancel or modify my existing motion for denial? What do I need to do?
If you just want to clarify...
Clarify? Okay, let me clarify my denial. It fails to meet criteria of the code specifically. There's not one criteria, Section B, which I feel that is aptly proven by competent substantial evidence. And Section C3 says that the application will not have an adverse impact on our streets, and there is no way that this application presently can satisfy that condition.
Mr. Mayor?
Steve, wait a second. Hold on a minute. He's the maker of the motion. Hold on a minute.
We would like to withdraw the application.
What does that do for a year?
I know exactly what he's trying to do, because he knows if we deny, he's got to wait at least a year. I understand what he's trying to do, you know, try and get it reconciled, you know. I understand what he's trying to do.
And we would continue to work with neighbors.
Well...
But we wouldn't be bound by, you know, some artificial timeframe, a week, two weeks, because I think you're right, it is not sufficient time. But a year is too long of a time period.
And Steve, this isn't something that happened in a couple of weeks. This has been ongoing for an extended period of time. And Steve's right, you know, some of these things that now you're, that are being proposed to address some of the concerns, maybe it would have been a good idea to incorporate those checks and balances to ensure that you were going to address, you know, some of those issues that adversely impacted that neighborhood, and rightfully so. And even with those checks and balances, you even admitted that there's a potential, it's very, very difficult, you know, people coming from the West.
A withdrawal of the application, I think, and your town attorney can weigh in on this, maybe, would foreclose the possibility of appeal.
Well, I'm going to defer to you, Keith.
Mayor, at this point, it's up to the council to determine whether or not it wants to or does not want to accept the withdrawal. If you accept the withdrawal, it means that the applicant, if it ever wanted to come back on this item, they would have to start over anew. They'd have to submit an application anew, it would have to be advertised anew, they would have to go through the...
But that could start next month.
It could start whenever, but I would tell you, as someone who does this for a living, that I doubt Mr. Weary would do this next month, because he knows he'd be back here in ninety days in the exact same situation. So, that's just the reality of the situation. Mr. Weary is correct, that if they withdraw, they withdraw, and the town and the residents would not have to think that this would be in an appellate action in circuit court through a writ certiorari or some Arloopa claim or something of that nature. They're asking withdrawal, you can accept the withdrawal, or you could continue through with your motion and proceed. So, it's up to the council procedurally at this time on which way they'd like to proceed.
I think the motion we got on the floor is to deny, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
But what, the proposition by Steve is to withdraw the application. And I understand, and I understand why. Obviously, this is...
I think they're going to need a year to fix it.
This is reality, well, this is a reality check. You know, something, Doug, it might be two years, who knows? It might even be longer than that. But this is a reality check, that when you come before this council with this history of adversely impacting our neighbors, especially if, you know, we're not incorporating some scenario that adversely impacts their ability to practice their religion, which is not something that we would do. In fact, we encourage it. Again, we've got thirty-something religious institutions in the town of Southwest Ranches. But an additional community facility and not being able to reconcile all these issues that have transpired in the past is very, very difficult to comprehend, Steve. And, you know, from my, from my perspective, and again, we have a motion in a second to deny, and you know what that means, obviously, you've got to make the motion in a second, and you need four votes. You know what that means. I'm always inclined to try and accommodate those that are in this position, knowing full well what the reality is that exists here, what our philosophy is, and what our concerns are. I'm not so sure that you can get it reconciled prior to a year. I mean, I understand why you're doing what you're doing. I personally don't have, me personally, I personally don't have a problem with you withdrawing your application, knowing full well how this town feels. And if ever you got a taste of what reality is, again, they're welcome in the town, and we certainly would never discriminate for anybody for practicing what their beliefs are, what their religion are. They're wonderful, wonderful people, okay? And what they do is absolutely wonderful. But this addition adversely impacts our residents, this community facility, and it's not something that we would agree to or approve. I think that that's evident here. So, I, me personally, I don't have a problem. It's up to you all, again, we have a motion in a second to deny, and I know for the record, Doug, you confirmed the reason. I don't have any problem with accepting the withdrawal of his application.
I have no interest in accepting the withdrawal unless he adds to it. He will not reapply for at least six months.
I think we can agree to that.
I don't, I would support that, I'm not going to argue, but...
I mean, I really want nine, but I know he can come back in a year, but six months cutting it in half, and what that does in six months, it goes and shows that if they followed suit what you just told them they should be doing, all of you, and you don't even live on my street, and you clearly understand the situation, that, you know, I think Steve's got a better feel for it at this time.
And if I can add a little bit to that, don't come back before this council until you get it reconciled with those residents and address the concerns, and fully comprehend the impact that it's had on this, on the street. We've been trying to tell you that it does, that it does, that it does, and here we are at the last minute. So, again, don't come before this council until those issues and concerns have been addressed by the residents, and you've come up with some type of a compromise that everybody can live with under the circumstances.
We understand.
And, you know, I can just add, Mayor, just for a second, you know, I'll support the six months, but I think it's going to take you more than six months to get there. Let me just put it that way. And I agree a hundred percent with what you're saying. Come back when you're there.
I'm sure it's going to take you more than six months. It may take you longer than a year. But you heard this council, not just me. You come back unprepared and unready, and you haven't sold that, you're wasting your time.
Freddie?
Yeah, if we pass this motion, he can still come back.
A year.
You know, that's, so I don't see why you want to refer, you know...
Just because he's asked and wants to withdraw the motion with an opportunity, and again, I don't have a problem with that, but it's crystal clear to Steve and the members of that wonderful church.
I have a problem.
Until you get it reconciled with the residents on 130th, and you can say that we're in agreement with regards to this plan, not a good idea to come back.
Understood.
Call the question.
Well, let's just hold on a second, Freddie.
I'm going to withdraw my second.
I modified mine to not come back before six months and allow him to withdraw.
No.
The applicant has requested that the council, so now there's no motion on the table, because you withdrew your second. So, the applicant has requested to the council the opportunity to withdraw his item from consideration, provided that he will not come back for at least six months. If the council wishes to accept the offer of the applicant, just vote it up or vote it down, but that's the offer from the applicant.
But let me add this to this, Keith, and I hear what you're saying, I don't have a problem with that. There might be some remarkable, I'd be shocked and astonished that you work out something with the residents where everybody comes here and says, "We're in agreement on a plan." That could be tomorrow, month, I don't expect that to happen, but I'm certainly not going to, do I want to limit it? Like I said, if that's what you all agree to, you want six months, I don't have a problem with that. But from my perspective, until it's been reconciled with those residents, and you come to the town and say that we're all in agreements, in accordance with what we've, you know, negotiated as a solution to the concerns that they have, then don't come back. But again, if it's a day, three months, six months, nine months, two years from now, I quite frankly, don't care. But if that's what it takes to get support of this council and furtherance of you wanting to withdraw your, your, I lost my train of thought.
Application.
Your application, sorry, then that's fine with me. So...
I'm going to make a motion.
So, I'm making a motion to allow you to withdraw, but you can't come back for at least six months. So, you got to agree to that, or...
Here, he already did, so...
Okay.
The motion, just to clarify for the record, and Stephen, you can jump in if you have any issues with it, is to accept the applicant's motion to withdraw, subject to their agreed to caveat that they will not reapply for reserving for at least six months.
I'll second that.
Right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Call the question, please, Russell? If there isn't any additional questions, comments, or concerns. Russell?
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
And I'd like to just clarify one thing. You got to get residents' support, or it's never going to fly.
I understand. We wouldn't waste our time or the town's time, the neighbors' time, with another application that is not going to enjoy the support of neighbors.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number five. This ends our quasi-judicial item. And the next item, we'll give you like thirty seconds for everybody to leave.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It's planted, I told them about it. I know, I agree, I told them. They don't want to hear it. I don't even tell them yet.
You got, you have to build some consensus there. You can't, you can't have winners of the issue, you got to have...
They are nice, they're my neighbors, I know.
They've got to show that they're ahead of the curve, you know, that they're proactive.
At all. And maybe keep memory on that, don't they? What the hell, what was their problem?
A lot of problems.
But they're accessing it now.
Is it after, is that Broward County?
It's not our county, it's State Road.
What, well, they have saved it from Broward County, I watch them.
I'm sorry, how you say that?
I was, yeah.
I know, the, like, poor...
Okay, at all.
That's right. There's no issue.
That's all the town thought, they just want to try from their road.
So, I think you're so close, you know, and, so, don't tell them to be discouraged, because I think they'll get it, I just think it takes time.
You know, it's good seeing you.
Be cool.
Jeff, are we adjourned? Jeff, we're adjourned, you're done for the night? I'm tired now, I've got a cold for two weeks.
Get started again.
Mayor, I'm pleased to announce there's no public comment cards tonight.
Impossible.
We can skip to number six.
Wow. Okay, item number five, public comment, there isn't any? That's unprecedented, too. I don't think that that's ever happened in history. Been here eleven years, twelve years, I don't ever remember not having public... Well, Gay's not here, too, though, so that explains it.
Or Dee.
Or Dee, that's true. Item number six, board reports. Is there any members of any boards or committees that have any information that they'd like to pass along to council? Seeing none, item number six is complete. Item number seven, council member comments.
I'll go first.
Gary.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, everybody. Just want to do a few public service announcements, and then I want to move into one item I want to talk to the council about and see if I can get some sort of consensus out of it. First thing is, the Astronite Parks Foundation has a country hoedown on October 11th. Tickets are seventy-five dollars. It's at the Weekly Pavilion. Just want to announce that, so everybody knows that. And it's going to be a lot of fun, so make sure you go. October 18th, Saturday, at the Equestrian Park, is the Country Roads, Southwest Ranches Country Roads Arts and Crafts Festival, hosted by our December, and she does such an outstanding job every year. And it's a lot of fun, and everybody needs to go, and it's 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. And you'll probably see Davey Police out there, you'll see all your council members, you know, everybody just kind of shows up, and it's quite an enjoyable day. And hopefully, the weather cooperates, and it's a little cooler. In case everybody doesn't know, it's daylight savings time this Sunday, part of the public service announcement. And then, we have a food truck event for the Education Advisory Board on October 25th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Equestrian Park. So, I want to mention that. Okay, that covers the month of October, so November and December, I'm not going to get into yet. Something I wanted to talk to you about, it's just this one item, it's not going to be that brief, but try to get a consensus on the council with this. And I'm going to be reading from some notes here, so I don't want to miss any points. A resident from out west, a mom, approached me several weeks ago and asked me for my help. And that was to get back to the original problem of how to make the western portion of Griffin Road safer for our families. And what I took away from that conversation was the idea that if the town could do one thing to improve the safety of the road, what would it be? One thing only, if we could pull that off. And so, I did a lot of brainstorming, and, you know, went through the whole process. Broward County has already told us the traffic counts are too low for a widening project. And there's not any future plans to be widened through 2040. It's not on any of the maps. And the project's from the NPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And I'm not sure there's a consensus on the council to petition the county for the widening project of that magnitude. And he looked at it, and he said, "This is a bad situation." And this is the head of the traffic division, and it needed improvements, and he was going to fast-track it. Well, long story short, 18 months later, the intersection was finished. So these things all take time, is the point I'm trying to make. This isn't anything overnight. You know, council passes a resolution, there isn't somebody outside with a bucket of money to pour it on us, you know? There's a mistaken impression that that's what it has, and we have, you know, somewhat of a magic wand up here. There's a whole process that has to go through. And the first thing is, I want to take consensus of the council, if there's a consensus to move forward this, so we can give Andy some direction on it. And then if we can get the county to agree with it, we can take it to the next steps and the other municipalities. So I'd kind of like to poll the council if you guys are on board, or you know, if this is a doable project from our point of view.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great idea.
I'm good.
Okay. All right, so we'll work out the details, you know, Steve, this is obviously in your district, you know, we'll work out the details. But just want to say that, you know, I was talking to a mom, and she just said, you know, "We're so far off track, the politics have taken over on this thing, and we just want something that's safe for our kids." And I think this is something that's doable, on the north side of the street, or I don't want to, you know, preconceive any notions, because the engineers would know, you know, what that is, because there's a lot of telephone, FPL poles on the south side. So I just want to take it to the next step, you know, is where I want to get going with that, and give Andy some direction on that. And that's it, I'm out of gas.
Thanks, Gary. Good idea. Great idea. Good suggestion. Freddie?
I need that. I need that. Cleith or Emily? I went out there today to take a look at the people working on this thing. They're cutting those big Australian pines. Are that part of our project, or is that guy that's building the house doing it? Is part of our project? Okay, because they had a guy up there 200 feet in the air cutting those things today. But no, that's the latest going out at the park they're in. They're now clearing the mitigation area. And then I know Cleith has got a program going where he's going to try to go in there and clean the rest of the area that we need to be cleaned and get all that out, and maybe we can get that filled done, so Cleith's working on that. Other than that, I was out there today, and the bathrooms are in, the pavilion's in, and it looks like they're almost ready to plant the grass, aren't they? It's looking good. That's all I got.
Thank you, Freddie. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to give an update on the roadway 190th and the conversations that I had with Griffin Platt 345. We had a meeting with them, week ago, Monday, I believe it was, to go over the latest plan on how we would be implementing them. They invited me to be able to join their homeowners' association meeting, so I really appreciate them doing that. We had a good conversation, there was a lot of questions, a lot of concerns, but at the end of the day, I think there was a consensus to get behind the plan that we're looking at and to be able to move forward with it, basically with a control device at the north side of 190th, just south of where FPNL substation's at, and closing off the roads on 54th and 57th that go between 190th and 188th. There's still some debate whether they would be totally shut off, or whether they would be shut off just for motorized vehicles and, you know, four-wheelers, things like that, golf carts, but would still allow pedestrian and equestrian. I'm hoping that it goes that way, but that's still a final. One of the issues that certainly has come up here before the council, and I reported back to them, that there was some issues there, was really the mechanics of the funding of the gate on there. And what I would like to propose there is that really what we could do is create a grant much similar to what we've done with grants for some of the signage for Sunshine Ranches and Rolling Oaks, but in a larger degree, to be able to create a grant that could be, excuse me, could be applied for public safety, and might be able to be applied for this gate to get this in place, and would be available, frankly, in future years for other similar type projects. And so I'm hoping that that will be able to move forward. It would transfer the actual responsibility of contracting and building the gate out of the town's hands and into the HOA's hands, and I explained that to them. They had some concerns, but once again, I think the consensus was that that was the most viable way to go forward. So I just want to report to the council on the progress there, and so that if there's any feedback, I'd love to hear that as well.
Mayor, if I may jump in and join him a little bit in that conversation. The town has had some other gates up over the years on 185th, 186th, that arm thing and some other stuff. I don't know what the status is, where that arm is, if we have that arm, if it's sitting in storage, or things of that nature. So I would tell you that myself, if we have something that we've already bought, paid for, and own, and want to donate it in that regard, and we're not spending hard cash and we have something, I don't mind donating something like that if it's sitting in storage and we're not using it. But like you said, they'll have to take the responsibility of it. Just because we give it to them, it's broken, they're going to have to fix it. But, so I don't know what other gates, what other fences, what other operators that we might already own, paid for, and have that might work for that scenario.
Well, that particular gate, you may recall, really wasn't functional for a number of reasons. One was it only covered half the road, didn't cover the whole road. And second of all, it was made out of some pretty flimsy material, and the, our resident repairman for that gate was actually Deputy Roselli. He repaired it more times than anybody else in town, so I don't think that, I understand what you're saying, and that would be a great solution, if that was a viable solution.
I mean, you can get a piece of aluminum instead of PVC plastic, and you can get it longer, and it'll still raise 90 degrees.
Yeah, no, it's going to need to be something more substantial than that.
Is it manually operated?
I think it really needs to be something very similar to what's out west on 199th and 202.
Can I ask a question? Cleve is 190th on our schedule to be paved, even though it's a private road, we still going to do it?
No, 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 it's not.
Up to it.
No, so it's not on the skate?
It is.
Oh, it is?
Whoa, 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 no, 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 no.
190th in front of the asphalt plant, up to the property line, is public.
I know what I'm talking about, from there south.
Private.
All right, then why are we arguing? Those people are paying taxes, and they're going to get the road paved, and we're arguing about a gate?
Does that conclude council?
That's my comment.
That's your comment, and you're sticking to it, Steve?
I'm sticking to it.
That's right. I'm going to leave it up to you to talk. Oh, I don't know if I can stand it anymore, after three and a half hours. Well, maybe we'll leave it till when we get a ruling from the judge. What Keith is alluding to, he and I were in court for several hours this morning and listening to motions for summary judgments on both sides without getting into a lot of the specifics, because we can go on and on with regards to our opinion. I expect, what, the end of probably next month, where CCA will probably be in, going to trial on this, you think it's going to be two weeks? It'll be very interesting to see what happens. I will tell you that this interlocal agreement is really a significant component in the language in there with regards to expeditiously approving water and sewer, and the inside, foresight, whatever site that our town attorney has is brilliant. And again, it's an important component with regards to this case. In fact, real simple, from CCA's perspective, two different things. One, the language in the interlocal agreement about expeditiously approving water and sewer, is it something that was enforceable and applies? I'm not sure what, you know, the legal argument on the other side, because a lot of things that he was talking about, in my mind, being a layman, I'm not an attorney, but I know you understood it, it just, I just couldn't comprehend. So the language is important, and also they're, what do they refer to them as when they appoint somebody from the municipality, it'd be their chief spokesperson? What do they call it?
Their expert?
No, not an expert. Corporate representative. I'm the corporate representative for the town of Southwest Ranches, and, yeah, thanks a lot, Steve. Thank you for the appointment. You know, it's something obviously very important to us, and we're passionate about how they screwed the town of Southwest Ranches and confident that we're going to be successful. But even during the deposition, when they asked Charlie Dodge if it was something that was enforceable, that language, that they have an obligation or responsibility to provide water and sewer, and Keith seems to think he just said, "Yes," and I thought he said, "Absolutely." But anyway, he confirmed that it does apply, and they did have an obligation or responsibility. Not the least of which, and I'm sure that most people in here know Sam Goran, very respected, respectable, knowledgeable, well-known city attorney, who essentially, without boring you with details, because it was long and arduous today, this, two, three hours of this stuff, but who essentially said that if you don't provide water and sewer, that it's going to open you up for a lawsuit, and from a legal perspective, it is problematic. And that's an important part of this case as well. Somebody that's been doing this for 35 years said that, you know, staff has confirmed that you do have capacity, and we do have an agreement that requires us to expeditiously approve water and sewer, and you need to do it. And so that'll be interesting to see how that moves forward. So I expect some decision by the judge in the very near future with regards to this summary judgment on both sides. How that impacts the trial, I'm not sure. I know that they're preparing to go to trial. And thank you very much. I will be spending a lot of time in court as a witness, as a part of this case as well. But again, it's the right thing, and what they did was wrong, and it adversely impacted the town of Southwest Ranches, you know, a plan that we had tried, or were in the process of bringing to fruition since our incorporation, even prior to that. But something that was very important to us. So we don't ever mind fighting for what's right and holding others accountable when they're doing the wrong thing. So with that being said, that concludes council member comments. I'll turn it over to you, Keith, for legal comments.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll just elaborate for one more minute on what you spoke of, in case any of the residents are confused. The mayor, myself, Councilmember McKay, was in attendance to watch the motions, the final motions before trial of CCA and Pembroke Pines. That's essentially what it was. It's their last shot before the trial to tell the judge why they're right and to put their best argument forward. To try to sum up the positions very simply, Pines's argument rests on the fact that they don't believe that they are legally allowed to provide water and sewer to anyone in the town of Southwest Ranches because we're an incorporated municipality. That is essentially their legal argument, that they're not allowed to provide us with water and sewer, and that if they are allowed, which they don't believe they're allowed, they can pick and choose who they can provide water and sewer to. On the converse side is CCA, and CCA is saying that you're a public utility, you're not a municipality, you're a public utility, you have to provide the public with water and sewer. And under one case, which is a Supreme Court case called Allen's Creek, there's two ways that a public utility can be required to provide someone with water and sewer service. And that is either one, under contract, or two, if they manifest the intent to provide water and sewer to that property. So to that, CCA shows our contract, saying, you know, there is a contract to provide water and sewer, and more importantly, because we're not the ones who have that contract, we're going to rely more upon the fact that Pines manifested its intent to provide us with water and sewer. And today, the way they showed the manifestation of intent was they showed the aerial photographs that show that Pines ran the lines into their property. They showed Pines signing DEP applications that they guaranteed to provide them with water and sewer. They showed them our contract, and they walked the judge through all the ways that the City of Pembroke Pines told them. There was a resolution, there were three letters from Sam Goran, there was, you know, and essentially what they did is they walked the judge through the ways that Pines showed them that they would provide water and sewer to them. This case will go to trial in October. I personally don't believe the judge is going to grant either party's motions today. I think that there are open issues that will go to trial for the judge to determine whether or not Pines has the legal authority to provide them with water and sewer. We're watching the case directly because although it doesn't directly impact us, meaning that if they win, they lose, it doesn't necessarily impact us, but it's important to see for the future of the town and the future of that site, whether or not eventually we'll have water and sewer service from the City of Pembroke Pines. As Pines's own attorney told us, our case is so dramatically different, because in our case, we have an actual contract with Pines, saying, "We will provide you with water and sewer service." So they're not directly alike, but it's important to see, you know, the facts of this case, to see how it'll impact us in the future. So as soon as that opinion is issued from the court, I'll let everyone know, but the trial will likely be in the next two to three weeks, and that's what's happening with that case.
Keith, just a quick question. So historically, while we were going through all this, Pines's position, if I understood it properly, was not that they had denied CCA, but it was just going to take longer for them to do their due diligence and to figure it out? Have they backed off of that?
Pines's position is, we never denied CCA.
Right.
We just don't know if we're required to approve them, which is why we filed the lawsuit, Pines, meaning Wade. Pines filed the lawsuit against CCA to find out whether or not they were legally required to provide them with water and sewer service. And at one point today, the attorney for CCA, Lenny Samuels, asked the judge to read our contract, and the judge read it, and it said, "Pembroke Pines shall provide, expeditiously approve, a water and sewer agreement with the town of, with CCA to construct a 2,500-bed, whatever square foot facility." And the judge turned to Usher Brown, the attorney for Pines, and she said, "Are you claiming that this language is not specific enough? It's not clear what Pines would be approving?" He said, "That's exactly what I'm saying." So it's going to be an interesting case. It's a very difficult case for a judge, if you can imagine, because you have a municipality of 150,000 that will be directly impacted by a decision, but in the end, it's going to be appealed either way. And to me, I think it will be determined by the Supreme Court, even though CCA believes that after, it will be finally determined by the fourth. But that's the current status of that case. Other than that, Mayor, there's no further legal comments. We've been having too much fun with this case. case will go to trial in October. Uh, I personally don't believe the judge is gonna grant either party's motions today. I think that there are open issues that will go to trial for the judge to determine whether or not Pines has the legal authority to provide them with water and sewer. We're watching the case directly because although it doesn't directly impact us, meaning that if they win, they lose, it doesn't necessarily impact us, but it's important to see for the future of the town and the future of that site, whether or not eventually we'll have water and sewer service, uh, from the city of Pembroke Pines. As Pines's own attorney told us, our case is so dramatically different because in our case, we have an actual contract with Pines saying, "We will provide you with water and sewer service." So, they're not directly alike, but it's important to see, you know, the facts of this case to see how it'll impact us in the future. So, as soon as that, uh, opinion is issued from the court, I'll let everyone know, but, uh, the trial will likely be in the next two to three weeks, uh, and that's what's happening with that case.
Keith, just, just a quick question. So, historically, while we were going through all this, uh, Pines's position, if I understood it properly, was not that they had denied CCA, but it was just gonna take a longer for them to do their due diligence and to figure it out. Are they, have they backed off of that and?
Pines's position is, "We never denied CCA."
Right.
"We just don't know if we're required to approve them," which is why we filed the lawsuit, Pines, meaning Wade. Pines filed the lawsuit against CCA to find out whether or not they were legally required to provide them with water and sewer service. And at one point today, um, uh, the attorney for CCA, Lenny Samuels, asked the judge to read our contract and the judge read it and it said, "Pembroke Pines shall provide expeditiously approve a water and sewer agreement with, uh, uh, the town of South, with CCA to construct a, uh, 2,500-bed, whatever square foot facility." And the judge turned to, uh, Usher Brown, the attorney for, uh, Pines, and she said, "Are you claiming that this language is not specific enough? It's not clear what Pines would be approving?" He said, "That's exactly what I'm saying." So, it, it, it's gonna be a, a interesting case. Um, it's a very difficult case for a judge, if you can imagine, because you have a municipality of 150,000 that will be directly impacted, uh, by a decision. But in the end, it's gonna be appealed either way. And to me, I think it will be determined by the Supreme Court, even though, uh, uh, CCA believes that after the, it will be finally determined by the fourth. But that's the current status of that case. Other than that, Mayor, there's no further legal comments. We've been, uh, having too much fun with this case.
And, and my understanding too, there isn't any precedent. So, we've been taking a look at, uh, something of, uh, of similarity, you know, associated with the case that they have and that we have. I, I don't even think that there's, uh, much out there that even, uh, exists. At least that's the impression that I got.
Yep. Uh, Pines keeps citing to a 1935 law.
Yeah. So, uh,
That changed 20 times.
And you know, it just doesn't make any sense. When you have their city attorney saying you have to provide water and sewer, you have, uh, an agreement that was fully vetted by the city attorney, that was approved by the, uh, the commission over there to say all of a sudden, "We don't know if we have to provide it or not." But yet previously, they devoted to do that and it being thoroughly vetted, if there was any question about it, why wasn't that issue raised at that particular time prior to, uh, approving that agreement? It's just, uh, interesting, to say the least. All right, that concludes item number eight, legal comments. Item number nine, administration comments.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and I'll be brief. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for your support earlier today. Uh, the fact that we have a budget coming into tomorrow is actually a, a very big deal and, and one of your primary responsibilities as elected officials. So, I want to thank you all for the, uh, I'll say the smoothness of the process throughout. And I do want to commend Marty and say much special thanks to him for his leadership and, uh, with the rest of staff as well. Thank you. Just want to reiterate that we have, uh, our workshop is set now to discuss the volunteer fire department and the future of the department. We're set for, for Thursday, November 6th at 6:00 PM. So, that, uh, that'll be a sole purpose meeting and, uh, you know, don't come hungry because we may be here for a while. You guys got a lot to consider. And, uh, last but not least, as council member Fissa Kelly had, uh, had mentioned before, you had previously awarded the contract for the clearing of the invasive exotics over at, at Country Estates Fishing Hall Park and that work did begin today. They're kinda working around the edges, taking some of the big trees down so that they can then work safely within the interior. So, that work is underway. We're in good shape and that's really all I have right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Andy, that concludes item number nine. Item number 10.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement with Whiteleaf LLC DBA Traffic Solutions in the amount of $111,553.57 for striping and signage improvements in Country Estates along Southwest 185th Way, excuse me, 186th Avenue and 188th Avenue, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement, excuse me, and providing for an effective date.
Take your time.
He's done.
Oh, you got finished? I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any members of the, uh, public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no public comment. Uh, Russell, you okay?
Yes.
Hey, Doug, would you mind if I make that motion? I don't wanna, you know.
Go right ahead. I withdraw.
I put in a lot of time on that motion, so, thank you.
You were just waiting too long. I was sitting back.
I know, you jumped right on it. And I appreciate that, but, yeah, thank you.
So, I withdraw.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Let the record reflect that, uh, council member Bright Cruz made the motion and, uh, council member McKay seconded. See, no public comment. Public comment is now closed. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns, council? Seeing none. Call the vote, uh, call the question please, Russell, if you can.
Breathe first.
Council member McKay.
Yes.
Council member Fissa Kelly.
Yeah, yes.
Council member Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky.
Yes.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes, item number 11.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a lease agreement with Cannon Financial Services, Inc., and a customer agreement with Cannon Solutions America, Inc., for a wide-format multifunction printer, copier, and scanner, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Russell and Andy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is something we talked about through the budget process. This was a program modification. This is a large format printer-scanner that, that staff needs, would help us make, be more effective. That's, uh, those kinds of projects are things that we now take to Office Depot or some other outside vendor to be scanned. So, we have costs that are incurred, uh, as a result now of, of not having that equipment. Bringing it in-house is gonna make it that much easier for us to do the work in-house. Printout, uh, items, obviously, for council as, as you need those things. We'll be able to scan large format prints and things like that as well.
And, and Mayor, I just want to tell you from a legal standpoint, these must be some good copiers because the agreement that they gave us was four-point. So, uh, it was that hard to read that these printers must be, like, sensational.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any members of the, uh, public wish to comment on this item?
I'd love to.
Sure. If you're speaking into the mic, we can hear you better.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Jim Lasky, 5780 Southwest 188th Avenue. Uh, I think it's a good printer too. I think it's the best you can buy. The, the slowest speed is 40 pages per minute, so I can understand why the price is getting up there. Um, well, along with this contract, it comes a $5,000 five-year service agreement that provides toner. These copiers don't break down according to what Cannon says. On an average, uh, national average, they break down once a year. $500 is the most you're gonna pay to service the, the printer, no matter what it needs, because all the tools are carried on the truck. $1,800 of this contract is finance fees. It's a $20,000 printer. Uh, it, to me, it sounds like it's around 6% interest. But the thing that I really object to in this contract is $2,000 is a cash rebate that you get for signing the contract. How do, you guys were approving a contract to buy a printer and you're approving a contract for a rebate at the same time. Why can't you negotiate a deal through the state of Florida, all right, and get on a piggyback with the state of Florida to at least entertain the price of a printer and buying it outright? And if you need money, borrow it from a bank. Can't you do better than six? What's our lending agreement with the bank we have now? Is it less than six? Okay. But there's a lot of companies that will finance capital equipment and 6% sounds like a lot of people would like that interest rate. So, I would suggest you get with Santo, uh, who I believe is a salesman for the company, because I talked to his boss today, and talk to him about other means of buying this same equipment. It's good equipment from what I understand. Just finance it different and pay a little less, okay? Thank you.
Any other members of public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no further public comment. Public comment is now, uh, closed. Again, we have a motion and a second, council? Freddie?
Andy, what are we paying now for a printer, uh, program?
We, we don't have this piece of, this is a new piece of equipment for us. We don't have this piece of equipment now.
Yeah.
This'll print up to 36 inches wide.
So, this is nothing to do with the?
It's something that we now have to take out to have scans done or have prints made. We'll be able to do here in-house.
Do we do that much?
Uh, Cleet can talk to, I think Cleet can talk to that a little bit more, but yes, we do.
Okay.
Any other additional questions, comments, concerns? Steve?
Uh, just, just a quick comment. Um, I, I appreciate what, what Jim's saying and I think he's made, you know, some valid points. I will say that, uh, when I was with Bank Atlantic, we redid all of our multifunctional units in the corporate center. It was quite a, uh, an extensive project in evaluating different vendors and different pricing and, um, it's, it's a highly complex, um, it sounds like it's, "Oh, I'm just buying a printer," but it's, it's not. Um, there's really a lot of components to it. So, anyway, um, there is a lot of weird stuff, Jim. You're exactly right as far as rebates, as far as what you pay for maintenance versus what you pay for lease. Um, I'll say at the end of the day, they've got a number that they've gotta get and it's just a matter of, of how you want to pay it, you know? Um, and, uh, and, and getting them to do all the maintenance is a very good thing. These, these are not like printers that you have in your house. These are computers, you know? These, they actually have, uh, sophisticated, high-powered computers inside them that do all the, all the work for it. Um, it's not something that you can really, uh, maintain yourself. And to, to, um, to bring in one of their technicians without a service contract, um, means you go to the bottom of the line and it's, it can be a long time before they show up because they're meeting all their service contracts first, um, rather than, uh, than just somebody who calls. So, I, I, it is expensive. Uh, it's an expensive piece of equipment. Um, there is some weird stuff going on with all these contracts, Jim. I don't disagree with you. Um, but I can tell you that, uh, it's been vetted through a lot of organizations and you can either pay it out of this pocket or you can pay it out of that pocket or you can pay it out of your back pocket. But any way you look at it, you're gonna pay it. So, I think it's a good deal.
Mayor, Mayor, if I may?
Thank you, Steve. Andy?
Yeah, I just, the rebate was in effect a discount. We processed it accordingly when we evaluated the cost on this. The other thing is Marty has let me know that we did look at the state of, uh, state of Florida for piggybacking and it, we didn't find anything that met our needs and our requirements.
Thank you, Andy. Okay. Any other additional questions, comments, or concerns, council? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second approved. Call a question please, Russell.
Council member McKay?
Yes.
Council member Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Council member Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 12.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the purchase and installation of playground equipment and related products and services for the Country Estates Fishing Hall Park from Game Time Division of Playcore, Inc., Dominica Recreation Products for an amount not to exceed $20,886.86, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, actually, I was gonna ask December to come up and, and speak to this item a little bit and give you a little bit more background on what it is since, uh, she's much more familiar with it.
Absolutely.
You don't know play by the club?
Not as well as she does.
Good evening, everyone. Um, real quick, um, the council approved purchase of, uh, playground equipment in 2013, um, after, uh, recommendation from the Parks Board. And you saw four different proposals for four different types of equipment and the type that was chosen was the, um, the, um, Game Time Playcore nature-based play equipment that is currently in the playground. Um, at the time that we built the playground in phases, um, we didn't have all the elements in, like the fencing and the sidewalks finished. And now those things are finished, so the last finishing touches are ready to go in. And these are, um, largely, um, bits of the play equipment line that you've already purchased, but they have, uh, little educational signs with activities and discussion points for parents to do with their children. Um, so it, it satisfies an, uh, an educational element for our grant. And, um, it just, it matches the equipment and the site furnishings that we have there. Um, there are going to be three benches, um, situated around some trash receptacles, some signage, and, um, it's, it's a pretty simple and straightforward purchase, the same way we did it before with the, with the lead public agency on the master agreement being the city of Mecklenburg, North Carolina. And the, um, cooperative purchasing is through the U.S. Communities Government Purchasing Alliance, which we've been a member of since 2008. The installation of the equipment will be relatively simple. We'll order the equipment. It'll take four to six weeks for them to ship it and then the installer will come in and install it. And there's, um, very little likelihood that they will even require major permitting. We'll, of course, go through the process, but we already have an, not an open permit, but we have a permit for the playground and this will be kind of an addition for that.
Very good, December. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve. It's killing me because this playground equipment is outrageously expensive, but we don't have a whole lot of choice. It does meet a grant. It does do a lot of stuff. But I gotta tell you, the, these prices of this playground equipment, I think I'm going into this next business.
One lawsuit.
And, uh, council member Bright Cruz seconded the motion. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? I think I'll hold you to this equipment, Noel, so when you go out there and play in the playground, I think we're in good shape.
Uh, Noel Hollinsworth, 199th Avenue. Uh, when I looked at the agenda the other day on the, this was a sort of a shock. Considering I go to every Parks Board meeting and I haven't missed any for quite a number of years, the only time I leave is when they have the joint meeting with the Rural Arts Board. Uh, I leave after they finish their regular meeting. I don't remember this coming before the Parks Board, though it may have come before Parks and Rural Arts together. But I called Gay, who is chair of the Parks Board, and I asked her, "What is this playground equipment?" She says, "Hell, I don't know." I said, "Well, find out." And she never called me back. So, right now, I have no idea what they're doing and what this is. We have seen no drawings of it, no representations of it. And when I asked our town administrator this evening, he says it was garbage cans and stuff like that and benches. And if it's garbage cans and benches, it's extremely expensive. There should be a hell of a lot of benches and a hell of a lot of garbage cans out there for $20,000. If it's not just that, I'd like to see some pictures and representations and see what this is. Because I think $20,000 is a hell of a lot after spending $100,000 for what you got there now. So, if you're just going to throw some more money away, go ahead and vote yes for it. Otherwise, show us what it looks like. Tell us what it is. How many benches? How many trash cans? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of public wish to comment on this item? Bob?
Bob Bush. Uh, Noel brings up a good point. We do not publicize the minutes to the various boards. Nobody knows what's going on. We don't have the slightest idea what they're working on or anything else. There is no reason why you couldn't publish the minutes of various boards on your website so people could see what's going on and see whether they need to attend or wanna find out more information. Uh, I've talked a little bit to Leland and he's working on this. Uh, but I think this is something we need to do. And also, um, the quality of, uh, the minutes is very poor. In most cases, there's one or two exceptions. And, uh, by publicizing those minutes, I think they would, uh, improve and it would improve the participation of the general public, uh, with the various boards. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no public comment. Public comment is now closed. I, I see what the background is. I've, I see what it is. Noel, do you serve on the Rural Public Arts or, uh, Design Board? How about the Recreation or Design and Recreation Board? Forestry and Natural Resources Advisory Board? Those two board advisory boards unanimously approved it on, uh, May the 14th, 2013.
Yes, thank you.
No, that's not, uh, what the background information, uh, says. So, anyway, Andy, you said that you have some follow-up?
Actually, that, that's what I was going to share with you, that, that it was approved by the, by a joint meeting of those boards back in May of 2013. Uh, I don't know if the chair of that board forgot because it's, you know, obviously, it's been a long period of time since it was approved, but it did go to the, a joint meeting of the Rural Public Arts Board as well as the, uh, the Parks Board.
Thank you, Andy. Freddie?
Yeah, December, I, only suggestion I may have on this is, I don't know how many times we're gonna do this. I know we're gonna be working on another one, but we paid a pretty good percentage every time the price went up on this thing. Wouldn't we be better buying it when it comes up and storing it here?
Thanks for your question, Freddie. Um, we, excuse me, we don't pay those percentages unless we buy equipment to address the question that Noel had, as well as your question. The, the town, uh, council approved the purchase of the board's recommended equipment in 2013. And all of this equipment, Noel, was, uh, looked at. This includes signage and site furnishings that we couldn't put in place at the time that they approved it. And, um, we also have, you know, separate funding for the playground through different grants. So, we did this in a phased approach, but this is the same basic thing that they approved. It was all part of it. And when they saw pictures of the equipment and saw the representations of the, um, procurers or the purveyors of the equipment, they all came and gave presentations and provided photos on big boards. Um, Freddie, to answer your question, we might decide next year, the boards might get together and if we're developing a playground somewhere else, they might decide on a different theme. So, I'm not really sure what they'll, they'll decide on. We present them with options and We present them with options, and they get to make the decision on what they recommend to you. So I don't know if that's something that you would like to pursue. I'd be glad to talk to them about it. But it has been a long time since we discussed it, and it's not fresh in everybody's mind. It's just time to put this stuff in now. And what it consists of besides benches and trash cans, which there aren't that many of, our educational signage, which does satisfy a grant element for education, both environmental and, you know, natural resources. And also, you know, a couple of other playground elements that help to support the educational element, a telescope and other things, so...
Thank you, December. Okay. Any other additional questions, comments, or concern, counsel? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve. Call the question, Russell.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 13. Andy?
Yeah, yes, Mayor, this is a discussion item on an appropriate tribute to former town attorney Gary Poliakoff. This remains at this point in time a work in progress. There will be a joint meeting of, once again, a joint meeting of the Rural Public Arts Board and the Parks Board to finalize, although there seems to be some good consensus coming out of those groups. They have a meeting on, I believe, October 14th to finalize that. So I'm not ready to bring that forward at this point with one exception. I would like to ask the council's, I'll say, blessing to move forward with ordering a bench similar to what we've done for Johnny Dollar and for Charlie Lynn to be placed outside the front entrance of Town Hall in front of where the conference room is.
Without a doubt.
Absolutely.
But that's only a starting point.
Agreed. But I want, I, that one was pretty clear, and I want to go ahead and get that ordered. The Rural Public Art Board and the Parks Board will meet and will finalize some of their recommendations that I'll be able to bring back to you with, certainly with appropriate costs and...
Thank you, Andy, and again, thank you for the council's consideration on this. If the, if you don't mind, Andy, I'm going to mention to my mom on that meeting because I think she wants to be there as well, so...
I think we'd love to have her.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, Andy. Item number 14, again, the approval of minutes for the August 28, 2014 council meeting.
Shall move.
Yep.
Motion and a second. Any members of the public? I know you read these minutes, and they've been corrected before. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the August 28, 2014 regular council meeting. Call the question, please, Russell.
Sure. Mayor, Mayor, may I ask, who made the second? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.